Please take a moment for silent prayer. All the questions. May I have your?
Portiana, Aliar.
Here.
John Mastin.
Here.
Nicole Cohen.
Here.
Lisa Ramon.
Here.
Kathy Cox.
Here.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to review and accept each input?
Certainly.
Second. Lisa Ramon.
Yes.
Portiana, Aliar.
Yes.
Nicole Cohen.
Yes.
John Mastin.
Yes.
Kathy Cox.
Yes. Okay, item 3.1, Mr. Mur.
Madam President, members of the Board, it is recommended that the Governing Board approve the proposed budget for fiscal year 2019-2020. Arizona revised Statute 15-905 requires each district to annually prepare a proposed budget no later than July 5th in the furnishing of the county school superintendent and the superintendent of public instruction. After approval by the Governing Board, the proposed budget summaries and notice of public hearing will be published on the ADE website. The meeting to adopt the budget is scheduled for July 8th, 2019. A copy of the proposed budget will be provided to you before the meeting. I move as we approve the proposed budget for fiscal year 1920.
Yes, second.
Nicole Cohen?
No, we're gonna hear this presentation.
This is gonna be a rough year. Madam President, members of the Board, the proposed budget, I'll walk you through a PowerPoint, and you were provided in front of you the copy of the proposed budget expenditure budget sheets. There was, there were some changes this year. The legislative session went a little long, so that caused the Auditor General to be delayed a little bit in furnishing the 2020 expenditure budget forms. But on something unrelated to that, apparently they were in the process of trying to streamline things as well, so there are no longer two sets of documents in front of you, it's just one. And I'll explain a little bit of how they try to streamline things, which I think in time will be a benefit, I think, to most people. So it was nice to not have to flip through two separate documents to be able to have everything in one file. So this is the purpose, as I mentioned in the rationale. So the presentation will include just a quick update on the updated budget forms, and we'll look at reports, average daily membership, recalculations, and budget expenditures, and then questions at the end. In the email provided, so the electronic version, you're probably able to look back towards the end of that document and then have a couple sections that were very long, required you to scroll down for quite a distance. These are the updated calculation forms, calculation and data entry. As I mentioned before, there used to be a separate file containing worksheets. That is no longer the case. They went to these very long forms where you simply input data all in one or two tabs, the calculations tab and the data entry tab. It is, it is pretty nice. It's nice to not have to, like I mentioned, to go worksheet by worksheet. However, the detail, which I was usually able to present to you to show you the actual calculations on how things broke down, isn't, it's not as detailed, but I still try to show you this in the PowerPoint. Try to salvage some of that detail for you so you can see. So this is just a very, so the snapshot shrunk down so it would fit on the page here on the presentation, and you can see the documents are very long and you have to scroll through multiple pages.
Let me interrupt you just a second. Can I ask Mr. Mastin to pull up that screen down so, because I can't see now.
No, the projector's not on.
Oh, how do we do?
You want this one?
I can see this. You can't see it either?
Yeah, no, there's not a light in the projector.
What's that, what's that total in three F's?
No, I've got nothing.
Uh huh.
That's about three percent.
It looks like a phone.
Oh, should I move now or am I even talking?
No, no.
What about those of you who cannot see?
Okay.
You may need to learn how to read.
Yeah.
I can't see.
Well, yeah, that's just, that's on the side. He's just showing.
I'm just showing these other forms have changed. We're not really seeing it expanded on these forms. They were provided, provided to you in the electronic form. So there are, as always, there are reports that we reference so that we can reconcile with the Department of that. Average daily membership, the budget, base features upon that. Average daily membership at the base support level that's provided by the state. So for average daily membership, this snapshot right here is included in one of those data tabs. The report's up there in the top left. And you can see that using what's called an ADMF 4671 report from the state, that gives us the average daily membership for, for the previous fiscal year. So with current year funding, we have to not only account for the previous fiscal year, which is technically still this year, but we're talking about fiscal year 2020, and then we have to project current year funding for fiscal year 2020. So that top line with the three arrows, that is current data provided by the state for what this year's hundred day numbers look like. I've mentioned before, they still can take up until around September to finalize those numbers because they're still trying to figure out and reconcile between all the movement between kids from one district to another. They're trying to make sure that the two districts aren't getting paid at the exact same time for the, for the same child. So there is a process that they go through. Usually by September, they have those numbers finalized. Unfortunately, for budget purposes, we're here in June and the beginning of July without completely finalized numbers. They are fairly accurate, they shouldn't fluctuate too much, but they're not final numbers yet. So then you see in the green box, it's current year ADM projections going across the screen. We're projecting to be fairly flat. We do have to budget, we've seen trends over the many years that we start out above where we ended, and in most cases above the hundred day numbers from the previous year, but then during the course of the year we decline. So we do have to budget for, try to budget flat so that we can capture the money and the funding through the tax levy to make sure that we can continue to pay our obligations. So we budget usually pretty flat from the end of one fiscal year to the beginning of the other, and expecting that we will still decline. Our hope, though, is that with the addition now of the Classical Academy, some improvements have been made at the high school. We are seeing some stability at the high school, at least from the year before to this year, the numbers didn't decline as, as much as they had in previous years. So we're hoping that we can slowly start to reverse that trend, trend of declining enrollment.
So if I understand the declining enrollment question, you're saying that we're seeing more stability and you're allowing that to improvements in facilities?
I believe that's, that's partial. We have heard of some students from other schools, other non-district schools here in town, who are starting to hear the message of the district, and they have not really understood what the district has to offer, so it's piquing their interest from what we're, what we're seeing. There's been a leveling off, not a complete level off, but not a drastic decline like we've seen for five years now.
And then on the declining enrollment question, are you playing inflation factor against the declining enrollment in what you're doing? Is that, is that your thought process, or is it, is it the fact that we've been a little bit more stable and we can hold that funding number year over year?
Well, the, the inflation factor doesn't really tie into this, at this part of the conversation, but it, it does down the road. But at this particular stage, this really doesn't have anything to do with the inflation factor, but I know what you're talking about as far as money that's working from the state. But at this point, we're talking just, just straight up student bodies in our, in our schools.
Okay, right.
And how long they've been in the school. So that, that's what this data point is showing here in this, in this screenshot. The calculations, again, this is all new, the first two screenshots up there, these are new based on the new updated forms. The yellow section is not fillable, it comes to us from the AG's office already filled based on the legislative session. The second, the middle area, is also part of the new form where we now have an opportunity to check boxes on, on what's applicable to our district. So in this case, the only thing that I can check as far as trying to adjust our base level is the fact that we do have, we do qualify for teacher compensation because we do have a qualified and approved evaluation instrument in the district, which most districts do in the state. So what that does is it provides an additional 1.25% added to the base support. So you can see at the top there, the base support is $4,150. You'll see in a slide or two, because of the 1.25% additional, that base support level jumps up to just over $4,200, about a $58 increase because of the teacher compensation that we qualify for. The last, the area on the bottom there, that's our teacher experience index. I cut it way down just to get to the data at the bottom, but for this next year, we have an experience index rating of 1.0025. And what that means is that when you look at this number here, you compare these two numbers, one number refers to the average of teachers' experience in the state, and the number on the top refers to the average years of experience of the teachers in our district. And because our number is higher than the average teacher experience in the state, we have a multiplier that is just above 1.0. So we do qualify for a little bit extra money here. We've, we've been that way for many, many, many years. This calculates out to be around, around $70,000 or so, $70,000 more because our, we have, our teacher experience level is just above the state average. So again, in calculations, I have my hand out in front of you, this, this page is, obviously all these are pretty hard to read on a PowerPoint presentation. So it's the first page that you see, it should say basic calculations for equalization assistance at the top. This one should say weighted student count towards the upper third. You should see 2019, 2020 ADM on the left and 2018, 2019 ADM on the right. So for beginning the calculations to finally get to a real number where we can set our budget limit, again, as I mentioned before, the budget is heavily reliant upon average daily membership, student, students in the classroom and enrolled in the district, and the base level support dollars established by the state. So you can see here that the numbers there in that green box, these are the numbers that are projected for next year. These are our projection, current year funding projections. They then flop to a vertical position, same numbers, they're just now listed vertically. The weighted factor is established by the state, it's not something that any district can manipulate, it's just determined by the state. This support level weight is the state's way of saying that we, we want to increase your student count, if you will, to really pay you more for the same amount of students, so we're just trying to weight each of your students a little bit more so it can be one less. And what their rationale is, and the difference between those weighted numbers, is that they're saying that a preschool student probably is a little bit more expensive to educate than a K8 student. Whether that might be because the furniture might be different, the level of teacher-student ratio might be a little different because they're, they're younger children. And then you see that the high school weighted level's a little higher than K8 students, and their rationale, again, a high school student's probably a little bit more expensive to educate than a K8 student because perhaps the sophistication of the level of curriculum, the experiences, the track that we're running labs, exactly. So again, these, the weighted factors are, are set and determined, they haven't changed from what I can see for previous years as well. Then when you take our current year projection number times the established weighted count, that gives us a projected weighted student count, which is, in this case, 6,158.792 students. Down at the bottom of this page, there's additional add-on support for, again, taking students and providing additional weighted level support because of additional resources that these students might, might acquire. So K3 reading, K3 students, they're, they're giving them a factor of roughly .04, .06, which isn't much, but their rationale is, we're trying to keep, we're trying to teach kids of this age group to read, they're probably needing additional supports, interventions, those types of things. And then below that, these typically refer to those students who may have special needs, needing additional resources because of their special needs. Again, a little bit heavier weighted counts on some of them because of the additional resources that they may require because of their special needs. So that's why you see the differing weighted categories there for each of those groups of students. So projected amounts, projected numbers for fiscal year 2020 on, on how many students in each of those categories, times the established weights set by the state, equals what we would then call a weighted add-on count, which in this case provides us a projected amount of 726 additional students based on the weights. So then you take the two, you have the weighted student count and then the add-on number that's down at the bottom, and that would equal your total weighted student count. So that number there, the two, and we'll see this on, on another slide, the two numbers together will then get multiplied against the base support, and that's what starts to produce our billions of dollars at that point. So taking, taking a look at, again, another, the calculations tab a little bit further down, I'm taking pieces of that calculations tab and cutting it down so you can see it. So you have the weighted student count that we talked about, plus the add-on gives us the total weighted student count, which I just mentioned. If you add in the base, if you multiply that by the new base support level, which includes that 1.25% teacher compensation, that $4,200 number I mentioned earlier, it brings us up to that $28 million, just under $29 million. Then you factor in the teacher experience index, which we talked about earlier, and that brings us to just over $29 million. Continuing with calculations, we are able to recover our audit expenses because we are required to have an audit annually, so we do budget those expenses within this calculation. We do have a transportation revenue control limit, which is then combined with that support level up above. We qualify for just over $900,000. This is calculated based on ridership, eligible riders, the cost per mile, those, those are factored in to then establish that number of 901,000. There used to be a nice worksheet for this, which gives greater detail as to what it looks like, but that's how that number, that revenue control limit number is generated by number of, of students eligible riders and mileage per rider. So the second handout that you have in front of you is district additional assistance, and it's the calculations to come up with a number for DAA. If you look at our preschool numbers at the top, this DAA is calculated based on the previous year ADM, so we're looking at hundred day numbers from back in January. So this currently is based on the latest report, cannot finalize till probably around September, 9.27, 19.275 preschool students. Preschool and K8 students are given a support dollar amount of $450.76 per student. So you can see that preschool would generate roughly just about $8,600 for district additional assistance, going over to K8 with our just under 4,000 students in K8, times the $450 weight for a per student count, and it provides us with about 1.5 million in DAA money. And then for our ninth through 12th graders with just over 1,700 students, at $492.94. They give a little bit more money for ninth through 12th. That generates $853,000 of DAA money. For a total, when you're looking at preschool through 12th grade, of 2.3 million, just under $2.4 million in district additional assistance. Now, the high school, they also provide just under $70 per student for, for textbooks as far as trying to provide additional money there to, to help with textbook adoptions, curriculum. Based on our 1,700 students and the $70 per student, we're looking at about $120,000 in additional district assistance, which gives us a total of about 2.5 million. Now, the DAA is still not fully restored yet, the state is still adjusting our DAA money, they still have reductions in place. However, they're, they're not anywhere close to what they used to be two years ago. Two years ago, they were reducing district additional assistance by about 85%. And I have the little table that'll pop up here in just a minute to show where we were two years ago to where we're projected to be for fiscal year 2020.
How much does a typical high school textbook cost?
$205.
More than $70.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah, $70 doesn't cover it, I think it's just a good big gesture that, that here's some extra money.
Right.
Yeah, well over $70. So you can see in the red that the reductions are still in place, for a total of about 700 and, just under $770,000 in reductions. So total, based on, again, they're, these are not finalized membership, they should be pretty close of about $1.7 billion in district additional assistance. So you can see here on this table, fiscal year 18, our revised budget brought us $316,000 in district additional assistance. This year, based on the budget revision in May, we brought in, we received $890,000 in district additional assistance, and then the further reduction in cuts will bring us next year approximately $1.7 million in district additional assistance. So again, definitely moving in the right direction. We should still, based on these numbers, have about 2.5 million, but 1.7 million is definitely welcome. Other calculations sheet to calculate are override. You can see the formulas there for the override. Again, override calculations are based on the previous year's student ADM, so weighted student count for January 2019, just six months ago. And then that's multiplied by the next fiscal year's support level, which is nice because we, we're looking at previous year's ADM, but we're calculating it on increased funding for next year. And then you can see as you, we add in the transportation revenue control limit, that allows us to levy for $4.4 billion, just under $4.5 million with a 15% override. So the calculations, this is page seven of the expenditure budget that is in front of you, but it's chopped down because page seven is in tortured form. When you, when you're looking at a legal size paper, it just doesn't fit on a PowerPoint where you can read it. So I, I just, I chopped it up, took out a lot of zeros, places that just don't, aren't applicable to us, so that I can squish it up there on the PowerPoint. So you can see, looking at that, there's our revenue control limit at the top, that $29 million figure. That is on the far left. And then we have for maintenance and operation, operations out of that $29 million figure, we have $28.8 million, and pushing about 1.1 million over to capital. We can talk about that a little bit more here in just a little bit, as the rationale behind that. You can see on the far left, there's the DAA money, subtracting the reductions from the state, and then giving us the 1.7 million that we looked at. The override authorization you see there at 4.4 million, projected carryboard, even though we still have the incumbents period, we're still on this fiscal year, about 4.8 million, $235,000 in Prop 123 money, and that's also tied to ADM, so that fluctuates as well, giving us a total of general budget limit of $38 million, $38,387. And then on the far right, you see capital with the infusion of 1.1 million in capital, gives us about 2.8 million in new money, new capital funds. So this is page one also of the, in your packet. Kind of interesting, in preparing the documents, you have to start on page seven and eight in order to go back to page one, two, and three. Why that is, I don't know. That's how, so we start at seven and eight, and then we begin to populate one through six. So this is page one, this is the MNO breakdown of that general budget limit, which is 38 million down in that far right corner. Back in February, you approved a compensation package for staff, which is about 85% of the budget already. So all this is for the state. So all this is, for the state purposes, is taking that general budget from a dollar amount of $38 million and committing it. So that gives us our limit of what we can expend without getting in trouble with the state.
So we're spending just shy of $33 million on salaries and benefits?
Uh, is that at the bottom?
Yeah, on page one. At the bottom of 61, 6200.
Yes. That, well, and that also, that is getting us to our general budget limit. If we, that's also taken into account of the $4.8 million carryforward that we have. That's contributing to this $38 million figure. If you took the carryforward out, if you go back to the top of page seven, we would have about $49 million, just under $30 million that we would then spread out across this page. But because we have 4.4 million in override money, and then 4.8 million in carryforward, we have about $10 million more than what we actually are getting from the state if we were to take those off the table. So to balance to the state, there's carryforward built into these numbers. You can see on page, on page one and column two, and that's 6200. You recall, two years ago, and when I revised in May, it messed it up, so that's why it looks a little different. But if you look at the 6200 category, you see that large dollar amount of $1,061,000, and there's two and a half people budgeted there for FTE. There's no way we're spending $80 for someone's benefits for two people.
Right.
So that, we talked about that before, that we're trying to isolate as much as we can, and we're trying to put carryforward so that it's pretty transparent. And that budget, that number is actually budgeted under, I believe it's Terry, for governing board administrative assistant. So that way, it's parked in the governing board's area, so that way, we can look at that and say, this is kind of what we're trying to set aside for carryforward, for true carryforward.
But as we roll that back, we would maintain that 85 cents out of every dollar.
Yeah. Yeah, that's about where we still are, 85 cents for every dollar goes to salaries and benefits.
And really, we're talking about not close to 10 million, but about four and a half million in carryforward.
Oh, and carryforward?
The carryforward would be monies that are unspent and un earmarked at this point, would be in general terms.
Correct. Yeah, there's $4 million, there's $4 million spread out throughout that sheet. We're trying, I was trying to put a large part of it parked in one area so that it can be identified. But yes, there's, the carryforward is in that, in that general budget limit number. If we don't, if we don't budget that number to the state, then we could lose that budget capacity.
Right.
So we have to, we have to account for every bit of money that's owed to us, so that we can keep those dollars.
But as, as we look at the budget overall, and we look at our salaries, benefits, and we look at our total budget limit, we're really talking about an equalization coming up both into that equation of about $4, $4.5 million.
Correct.
And that, that then makes it 28 million out of, the base is still the same, spend is still the same.
Correct. And what we're trying to do is, as mentioned before, what's helped contribute to that growing amount is the fact that the state has started up, started recently in contributing and actually paying more money into our base support level.
Right. So instead of being a total spend of 36 with that in there, it really becomes 32. Instead of 32 in salary benefits, it really becomes 28.
About 28.
Base level, is that like 724?
Yeah.
From, just from when I started on the board?
And what that carryforward will do is it will sustain moving forward. So once the, if we were to expend to that budget limit this year, let's say, then we wipe out all $4.8 million of carryforward. So if we were to commit that to, some people may say, well, let's throw a lot of salaries. But if we commit that to salaries, then we lose that budget capacity going into the next year, then we're upside down. So we have, we have to, that $4.8 million is true carryforward in the sense that it's almost like a savings account, even though we're not trying to make it a savings account. We're trying to juggle the fact that the state is starting to provide more money into that base support level, it's now growing a little bit more, and we're trying to commit those dollars.
Right.
But, but then we have that conversation about the override coming up in a couple of years, and we've already had that conversation.
And who doesn't need a rainy day fund? I mean, we, we had the last meeting, a pro forma thing, approved a line of credit for a million dollars to Wells Spardo. If we have 4 million, I assume that's sitting at the county treasurer's office. If we, if we have 4 million in there that we're overbudgeting to keep, that really becomes the rainy day fund at some point, and keeps us from having to actually utilize that line of credit.
Absolutely. And then it also helps us with our conversations at a committee level as to what is our long-term plan.
Yes.
Because even though a rainy day fund is great, $4.8 million is a big rainy day fund, I think that there's room to whittle that down a little bit, but that's going to take some time, and it's going to take some very thoughtful and intense conversations to how do we do that, and what does it look like, so that, so that we don't have, we're not hurting someone five years down the road.
And I think if we were to ever have that conversation, we're two or three years off from that at the earliest. We did make a promise, dear citizens of Chicago schools, that we were, as the state came to the plate, look at that override a little differently. We went out for override and went out for bond because the state was not fulfilling its obligation. And now as the state comes online and actually starts to fulfill its obligation, we really should be looking at that and going, how do we then, if we weren't to get an override down the road, you can't, we've got to have an election, you can't count on the money, how would we then unwind the override? What would that do to the district? What would that look like in the long term? And I think having that sitting there is a great starting point for that thought process.
And while we're talking about that, maybe this is a good time to just talk about that extra 1.1 that's sitting over here.
Yeah.
If we were to keep it here, then all that would do is inflate that dollar amount, that 38 million becomes 39 million, which means we still have that money sitting at the county. So that, the thought process with the 1.1, I just, I have no idea, I'm looking at debt, and I know that I'm not a fan of paying interest. I think it's a waste of money. I think most people would agree with that. So the proposal would be paying off the solar project with that 1.1, which would save us about $180,000 in interest over the remaining part of the loan. It's a thought process. It's not saying that that's what has to happen, but we have, we have money there to, and that's a perfect example of not committing money for long term, it's actually paying debt off debt without creating any more obligations.
How do we account for that solar project interest? Does that have no money?
It wouldn't, no, it's capital when it comes out of the state. Well, DAA, and that's kind of the thought process too, you have to look at DAA as being something that's sitting in the middle of MNO and capital. So your DAA allows you to either push money to MNO or push money to capital. So it's, it can't sit in the middle. So we either have to commit it in one area or move it to the other, and that's, that's what we did here. That's what allowed us to take that 29 million and play with it.
The thing I look at with DAA is, is the first problem that was, the state wants to take DAA as we see, and we sweep that out. So if you commit DAA to MNO, which is primarily with the salary base, and the state were to sweep it, you'd be stuck holding it back, so to speak. You wouldn't have, you wouldn't have a replacement plan for that money. And so as you sweep that DAA over, you love that risk of losing that soft capital, because again, we have history now of the state taking it. And how do you get that back, and what does that actually do to the staff? When you give the money out of there and then you have the state books? So I think prudently, you've got to look at it that way. And then to boot, I think we've got a laundry list of textbooks and small projects that come up from time to time, that we really should be looking at, some of that DAA would actually be for things, not that supply teachers with part of the paycheck, supply them with part of their budget.
I just wondered, is this January, do we realize the full extent of 206, about this January?
Okay.
So we'll be at 12 and then after that.
Yes.
What kind of interests can the county be getting for us on the 4 million, just down to one million? What kind of interest is the county able to give us?
They have a couple of different options. They do, they do longer-term investments on money that, where we don't need immediate cash flow. But most of our money sits in more of a liquidity account where we have, we have quick access, where we process $2 million payrolls, you know, and it's in our, and we're looking at numbers over time, so that's, that's also something that we need to talk about, or who we need to consider, is the fact that we don't get all of this money from the taxpayers in one month check. So we, we may have months where we, we get a few hundred thousand dollars in property tax, and then we have months where we'll get, we'll get five, six, seven million dollars in property tax. So in order to sustain and make sure all the checks clear, we need to have cash in the bank. Just because this is, this is a budget limit, while it should be pretty true to cash at some point, it may not be, it's not, it's not, surely not a direct representation of cash in the moment. So this $38 million figure, at some point, will be cash. We'll get it and we'll spend it throughout the course of the year, but we don't have, we won't have $38 million just sitting there right now. So it's, it's something that we have to really be careful about. And we talked to the county from time to time, that they're trying to keep our investments in very safe, easily accessible.
Do we have any kind of ballpark figure in the course of one year, where you look at a figure and say, this is how much money can the county invest?
I can, I can pull up the interest report. I have it on one page, but that's easy. I can, I'll email it.
Off the top of your, off your, off of your head.
Um, we, I just looked at revenue for the month of May, as it was posted, if I recall correctly, because interest, interest goes into a lot of different accounts though too, because we have classroom site funds, and there's interest that's allocated to those funds. So it, there's a, there's an interest dollar amount, but then it gets divvied up and then split up between all different accounts. So for property tax purposes and MNO, it's usually a couple thousand dollars a month that we'll get. But then again, we're talking about money that's coming and going, because it's not sitting there collecting interest over time. We're getting it, and then in a lot of cases, we're spending it almost as fast as we're receiving, which is, which is very, with very little reserve that just stays there and builds.
You know, it's, it's better not to play the club.
I was just thinking, you know, if we're going to pay off this solar project, it would be nice if we generated that much interest to end up in our outstanding. Like, wouldn't it, it's over $1 million to pay off that?
It's 1.1 million, 1.107, I think it is.
I was hoping the interest should accumulate more, but I don't think it's.
No, we wouldn't have that at this point in interest, but, but we have the budget capacity to do that at this particular point. And that's the conversation that we have.
Time in the future, we'll move to that.
Right. And that's going to have to be, it will come before the board, maybe as early as July 7, I don't, I don't know, or July 8, when we're here at Gator's adoption. And maybe put that on the table as an action, and then just open it up for discussion and see what the thought process is. We could, you could always say, let's revisit it. That'll just change the payoff amount down the road, and that's, that's not a big deal. I just think the important thing is, is do we, we have this as an option? Is that something we want to consider, or do we want to wait a year, or two, or three, or five, whatever it is? I'm just saying, let's move this over, make it available next year if we need to. I just move money back the opposite direction if we have to. It's not, it's just making that available for this particular project. Security on buildings that we're looking at. So it just allows capital to have money easily accessible, so that we can make those improvements and those decisions.
Are you guys ready to put that on the agenda? Or is that okay? I think it's a good idea. Any objection? We weren't voting, I asked you to vote. We don't have a motion. Anyway, it's not on the agenda. So is that, do you have any objections?
I, I don't. I think it's a good discussion to have.
Okay.
I would want to know penalties and stuff that points against it. So if we were to pay, say, half, would that, would that be a front letter or a back letter?
I can, I can look into those options and see, see what we can do. I know there's no prepayment penalty on it, so, yeah, but we can entertain all different, all different views and ideas. The fact that I currently have is good social life point. That's the date our next payment is due. And if we, we're going to make the payment anyway, so if we make the payment, I just get a payout for August or whatever it's going to be, and we'll just.
Yeah, let's, let's bring it forward, kind of, and see what happens.
So again, we talked about the GBL at the bottom. We're just budgeting to the capacity in which we are able to, to spend. This is the classroom site fund, this is page two, I believe. Yeah, they're stuck in the, I got page three. So we have funds 11, 12, and 13. And 301 K is out for eligible 301 teachers tomorrow, on the 28th. And I did mention in my email to them that the state has not paid May and junior, so that will roll over to next year. And those figures are included here to factor in the rollover. We're totaling roughly 3.4 million between all three funds that are available, as long as the state makes those payments. So again, every year, we typically will roll one month into the next fiscal year. This year, we have to do two, because I, if I don't have the cash yet, I don't want to write the check, even though I know the state will most likely come through. And then again, nothing surprises me. So I would just, I, we'll just roll, we'll roll May and June over to this fiscal year, which the numbers are reflected here. Page four and five, just cut those off. So page four is more of the detail as to capturing capital money at the $4 million mark there at the bottom right corner of that top cutout. This is our, our capacity. If we push that, when we push that 1.1 million over, and then the new DAA money, which is now sitting over there as well, and the unexpended dollar amounts from years past, and the carryforward from year to year gives us about $4.4 million. board from year to year gives us about 4.4 million. I'll talk about that and how we're trying to change some things a little bit, a little bit different mindset to kind of bring some decision making, a little bit of decision making back to the site level. Trying to take baby steps into empowering principals and, and site councils or whatever it is to make some decisions unique to the school and their needs when it comes to capital money. Down here at the bottom, page five, that's just a breakdown of the different funds, adjacent ways. We're not, again, not going out for adjacent ways lending. That's, we still have about 600,000 in there. We haven't touched that. We're trying to utilize bond funds first since that is basically the same thing anyways. We don't want to, my, my view is to not double tax when we already taxed once. And then if there's a true identifying need that's very unique to a particular project and that could be a discussion item to find out if that's something that's appropriate or not. You can see that there's that bond building fund. This is just the fiscal year, so we're anticipating roughly the dollar amount you see there. We are going to go out for, possibly go out for Series B issuance around October, November of this year. Because again, we have page two, the athletic project that we'd like to start this time next year, at the high school and also at vulnerable. And there's many, many needs of the buildings, like I mentioned before, when it comes to security. And that's, we're, we're addressing fencing and all of those items and calling it kind of under the umbrella of school safety and security since that's typically, do people say, for at least keep, keep people protected somewhat. So that will be also part of Series B that will go out before those student purchase bonds, like I said, October, November. That double A two rating will, should help with that. It improves our, our standing within the investment community as far as being a district that is demonstrating pretty sound principles. So that, that should help us on the interest side of our bonds and what we're paying in interest. This last page is just a summary of most other funds, federal funds, state funds. These monies are projections based on what groups, what, what grants may come our way through federal dollars and state dollars. These are just projections for what's budgeted. Doesn't mean that, that that's all we can spend or we have to spend that much. They're just projections to show that we are qualified to roughly this much money in funding. So right here near the end, this is what I was talking about with trying to bring some decision making to the buildings and, and giving them some decision making, some voice. So you see account codes, which really probably nothing to, to almost anybody here. But what this is, what this is really saying is that if we're looking at individual sites, you see these three numbers at close to the end of the account code, just before the four zeros. Those are unit numbers which identify a particular school or site. So what this is saying is that each particular site has a budget that they can spend up to for this particular situation. My eyes are bad and that one, 6731, we're talking, we're talking custodial, we're talking instructional supports, furniture and equipment in each of these, in each of these funds. And so in, in order to try to have a budget that somewhat makes sense when it comes to how, how did you determine how much money Starline got versus Smoke Tree and why does the high school have so much more than these guys? You like them more than, than we? They try to avoid that because I like all of them equally. This, this is the determining factor there. So it's, it was either determined based on square footage of the building, having established dollar amount, like for example, we have four cents a square foot. So that gives us this dollar amount here. So based on the size of your building, when you're purchasing custodial supplies, for example, that would make sense because you have more square footage to take care of. So you would need a little bit more money to do that. And then some numbers are, are based on student count. So if you were wanting to purchase chairs or your tinsel or whatever, certain tables for your leading interventionists, that money is given based on the number of students you have. It really doesn't matter about the square footage when you're talking about this, this type of a purchase really affects people more than, more than the facility. So that was, that's the determining factor between, hey, do you use square footage? When that was applicable, or number of students when they're applying. And that way, it, the student count was based off, I put a note in there, there's a comment on, on each of those so that that way, if anybody ever wanted to find out, well, why? And what number did you use? That was based on the last day's report that Terry provides, the admin. He should give like a weekly report, usually at the end of the week. So that was the very last report for this school year. Whatever student number was on that report, that's what I used. And then obviously square footage, that's based on information we had all along. So these, it may not seem like much, you know, a big deal. They have five areas that they can spend. This is five areas that they didn't have access to in the past. They were really just, they came and they, they called purchasing. So hey, can I have, is there any way that I can have money to spend on that? So now, they still have to run through purchasing. They still have, there's a, there's a protocol in place where if someone wants to buy intervention tables, we still have a district standard of the kind of intervention table we're going to purchase. So it's not just, I want this intervention table and another school has this intervention table. Pretty much we have, you know, six different types of furniture for the same purpose at all different schools and we're trying to avoid that. We're trying to have a district standard like we've talked about before and just giving them access to money to meet that district standard. So that's, that's the, the point of this. Custodial supplies and office supplies and we can, we can talk about that moving forward. I mean, the conversation, as Mr. Mazdun mentioned about the override, if we're going to shift our mindset and go back to the community, do we at some point change our funding formula for, let's say, school supplies, office supplies? And if there's room in the budget to make it to where, you know, a parent doesn't have to spend a couple hundred dollars per kid to fill this big list of needed or wanted items? If we can adjust this so that the school sites can then provide that, that, that may be something that we talk to the community about and trying to focus on programs and specific things that, that can help, help not only our schools, but help our community and our parents and the taxpayers. So just, just some ideas, we're, we're getting close to having that discussion here probably in the next year or so, if we're going to go down that road of trying to renew the provide. We need to have some bulleted items and these are some things that we're trying to accomplish. And teacher salaries and benefits may be on that bulleted item, who knows? I mean, the, you know, careless here, I mean, anything can happen. I mean, the state can, can take 85% of that money back, again, like you mentioned before on DAA and we're back to where we started, you know, real quick. So the conversation has to be fluid, but I think we need to start building a bulleted list of items as to what, what's our message? What are we, what are we trying to accomplish in going out and renewing the override? So again, power being pushed to the building sites. I'm hoping that next year, we add a few more items to this list. You know, I think principals will appreciate that. There's, there's no more asking questions, you know, how much money do I have or what fund do I pull this out of? You know, they have five account codes and they have dollar amounts attached to it and there's unique purposes. They may have a clarifying question as to, you know, can I purchase this too? And we can answer those questions. But at least they know how much money they have available and they, they send in the requisition and we make it happen as long as it's meeting the district standard.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
Okay, so if you implemented something like this, would it be kind of a use it or lose it? This would be what you have for the year and you can't save it if you have excess?
Yeah, that's something I still need to consider because I don't like that thought process of use or lose it. Because what that does is it typically forces people to make really bad decisions because they want to buy something because they have the money there. And then to me, that's a waste. So I, I think that would be a principal, kind of a conversation that we would have. I, I don't want to penalize it, but I think we need to look at our budget situation and reality every year. But I definitely wouldn't say you can use that or you're not getting it back because again, I don't want it. I'd rather them bank $6,000 for next year if they're trying to buy a class set or a grade level set of chairs or whatever it is because they have a vision and they're trying to plan ahead. If funding allows us to continue to do this, then I would say let it, let it build. That's, that's my view.
I don't, I don't like the language use or lose it. I, I look at it as you've been given a budget to use if you need something you have. I, I'll use petty cash because it's easy to understand. Here's your, here's your petty cash, but your petty cash is allocated for a year. If you'd like to carry it over, then that's a discussion. But it's not use or lose it. It's, it's literally like a petty cash fund in, in very basic terms.
Do you think though that you also have to help principals understand that this year's spending needs to be spent on this year's kids? And so if you need them, then you buy them, not save it because you're afraid you're not going to get more in the future. Because we also have that, because of our history, that mentality of I'm afraid to spend my money because I may never get any more, when the intent of funding these are the children who generated those funds, they should benefit from it, not to be wasteful. And they agree with, like, we don't lose or use it, but it's also not just a savings account to be working.
First, I commend you and I think it's wonderful hearing principals this kind of persuasion, less ability as far as, as Lisa's question. If only the legislature could understand, if they could come up with the concepts that they, they have long range planning. Of course, there's topics, there's always going to be a recession, there are always going to be those events and then you can adjust to, but in the meantime, they can do this and we can depend on that money in, in the different schools. This is a wonderful way to do long range planning for things that you want to bring into your school. You just can't do it this year and you start making choices down the road and put money aside, put money aside and have some fund drives and things, bake sales and things like that. But I, I, I've never been able to do long range planning in this school. This is the first time I mean, I even thought it might even be possible at this local, like if you just go aside.
I, I think if you go back historically and I know some of the older principals in the district, like the lot of these, Ferdinand, Bill, and Scarborough, and, and I've had side talks with them here and there over the years after getting out of, out of the district, assistant by graduating high school. One, one of the things that, that keeps me back in this conversation is centralization. They had authority, they had budgets, they had things similar to this and those were old and centrally and removed from them. And it really made a thought process of the uniqueness of each school and the character of each school go away. When you centralize everything, you have guidance, you have, you know, standardization at some point, but you also need to have a pattern where that individual building administrator has that flexibility. And that, that's why I, I like this. I think that addresses some of that centralization complaint.
And the district will still support school sites. We have, we, we as the central office have, we're, we're trying to establish long range goals as well, or the range of purchase, class, or I'm sorry, grade level sets of chairs. Again, we did that earlier with sixth grade and our, our direction was please put this in every sixth grade classroom. Or, or we too are trying to check boxes over here so that we know that sixth grade is taken care of for a number of years with chairs. And we ordered some extra. So we do have, we do have some room for, you know, shuffling them in and out. But we're getting ready to order another grade level set of, I believe it's third grade chairs. And those chairs will, maybe a second grade. I saw, third grade, so I believe it's third grade. And what that will do is allow those good third grade chairs, we're not saying throw your third grade chairs out. We're saying take the good ones and filter those to the appropriate grade levels that require the 14 inch chairs and get rid of the old ones and the bad ones, the ones that are itching, you know, kids' legs. Throw those out and take the good ones and, and replace them. But then we're also trying to again, check a lock saying that third grade is now taken care of. So the district, we, we still, we still are doing everything we can to support the, the efforts of the school. We're just, again, this, this vision and view is just again, trying to empower principals and those who make decisions, roots on the ground at the site, say, this is, this is what I really, and trying to make it a little bit easier for them to not have to ask and try to find that money. It's just, it's there as long as, we'll still, we'll still do the debits and credits, we'll know how much you have left, but you should also, as principals, should have that information that, hey, I have, I have $5,000, I spent $1,000, I still have $4,000 left. So hopefully there's, hopefully principals are, will do that too, to keep track of the funds that they have, I mean.
One more.
Yes.
Can you, I didn't catch it, if you said the five categories, one of them was custodial?
Custodial, so custodial supplies is one. And we, we transitioned this year into that with divisions. We now finally have something that we can track requests from school sites as to how many trash bags we grow or how many batteries we can borrow. So we have that baseline and we're going to continue to develop that. So custodial supplies, office supplies, furniture and equipment, instructional supplies, and then we have custodian furniture and equipment as far as items that they may need, whether it's a vacuum cleaner or their, their polishing machine that goes down and they need to upgrade. They want a blower, a backpack blower so they can, they can clean their sidewalks and all of this. That'll be some discretionary money they have. So this last slide, this is the new state reporting requirement that we have starting this year. This is part of the data budget tab and it shows average teacher salary for fiscal year 19, projected average teacher salary for fiscal year 20, you see at the top. It shows the average increase, it's increasing about 2%. The definition there is optional, but I put that in there, most districts do to be very specific that our, our evaluation or measurement criteria is that these include only classroom site fund eligible teachers. So that's, that's all that's reflected in those dollar amounts. The average teacher salary does not include 301, any stipends, even though the state, even though they, they did mention that you can base your increases based on stipends. Not everyone gets a stipend, so it's, it's really hard to, to say, you're receiving more of an increase than this person because of your stipend, they got more. And then it doesn't include benefits. That's not in that calculation. And then this is new, so down at the bottom in the yellow, they're actually going back to two fiscal years to where they're showing fiscal year 18 where we started and then over the two years, it was a 13% increase. Again, just, just salary money, not. Again, just salary money, not including the real money benefits. And that'll be, by law, it's required that we post this information on our website, we currently have that now for this year, so it'll just be updated with the new figures. Something that is, something that we need to consider is the fact that we are moving from a longevity model to a COLA, flat COLA 5% model, so the longevity model kind of skews things a little bit, because some people received upwards to 8%, some even go back to 18, receive 10%, some people receive 1%. So when you're talking average, it's, I think you're going to see this a little bit, from last year to this year, coming up fiscal year 20, because of that, we're transitioning between people making, yeah, some people making high salaries, making larger salaries with a larger percentage of longevity, now everyone going back to just a 5% across the board, so the numbers are flowing that, so they've calculated out to be at 3% right now.
What does the typical teacher receive in 301?
Yeah, but this year it was 6,000, it was in my email, 6,000-some odd dollars, and then, and plus there's, well, there's 1200, maybe 1,275, that comes out of Fund 13, that helps offset the cost of the medical benefits, but they never see that. So if you're talking money that's coming straight to them, it was over $6,000. And again, this year, you're taking into account that we don't have two payments included, and at least one payment not included that we typically would have from the state, which would have brought that up.
And the 301 payments are payments that are made when teachers do above and beyond, they run a club, or coach it, or something like that?
Fund 12 is that way. Fund 11 and 13, the district decided years ago, that's just something given to everyone who opts out, who's willing to, Fund 11 and 13 goes to everyone, Fund 12 is performance-based, so it depends on a rubric that you fill out, which is above and below, and that you get, and it goes at 42 points, or something like that, to qualify for that part of it, but then it's also based on evaluation data, too, so on your performance evaluation. So percentages of that are tied to Fund 12.
And then 13 is insurance premiums, right?
Yes. About $100,000, it's about $100,000 each disbursement, so three times a year, goes towards offsetting the cost of insurance premiums, only for eligible 301 teachers. So if you're a 301 teacher, now my spreadsheet, you have the 1275 number, and then I take whatever the annual is, so if it's $9,019.20 this year, I take that away, minus the 1,275, and then that gives M and O the difference in those two. So part of it comes out of Fund 13, and then offsets the cost to the M and O.
So, to clarify, the average teacher in the district participates in 301?
Correct.
And the average payout to the average teacher in the district is about $6,000?
Plus, yeah.
Okay.
260 eligible 301 teachers this last year, 260.
Do any teachers not participate in 301?
Yes, but it's a small number. I don't have, that goes through personnel, but it's a small number.
Less than a handful?
Yeah.
So, pretty much, if we were to look at that, 301, which is included in a lot of other districts in base pay, would actually raise that number up around $6,000.
Their base pay, or in that averages.
And, do you think they're finding the question, when, on the contract, when it's broken down, as 301, and then insurance, is it 1,275 or 1,250, does that take an out of the number that's 301, or is that seen in there twice?
That would be a good question, I'd have to jump in personnel on that.
Because I think, I think it's on my list, I mean, I don't know for sure.
If your insurance shows $9,019.20 on your current compensation sheet, then it'd probably be in there twice.
Okay, and that's why I think that we might want to check on that, because that's an added 1,250 or 1,275 on our 260 people plus salary.
I'll make a note, that was coming out of personnel, so I will make a note to clarify that. Yes.
And then the 6,000, that does not include what we pay for their medical and other?
No. No, that's just salary, and then you add 9,000 on top of that for medical, and then we also pay about 11% for retirement?
11% of what?
Of the base of the salary that they make.
Of this 44. And that's been as well?
There's roughly, there's roughly 21% in fixed costs associated with the district contributions toward retirement, long-term disability, workers' comp, it calculates out to be about 21% for each employee. The district contributes on behalf of every employee.
So you're saying, 44, plus the six-ish, plus the nine, and then plus another 20%, 21% of 40?
Correct, that's what the district is paying, the staff member doesn't see all of that, because it's all behind the scenes, with just the cost of doing business for every employee, but yes, you're correct, that if you were to look at total compensation for what the district is paying per employee, you're looking at their annual salary, plus about 21% for all of those benefits I just listed, plus another 9,000-ish for medical benefits.
And that's 6,000.
And that's only for 301 eligible teachers, so that's your regular classroom site teachers, 260 people who are eligible for that.
And plus the 6,000.
For the 6,000, it's only about 260 people getting that.
Yes, okay, correct. So total compensation for that average teacher, you're looking at, well, north of 60,000.
67.
And that's where, for us, we have to budget that amount, even though it's not showing that they're being paid that amount.
That's why your 6,200 column starts to increase a little bit, because of the fact that your 6,200 column on page one is calculating the 21% of benefits, your medical insurance of the $9,000, all of that is coming out of the 6,200 column.
And I just wanted to clarify, our starting salary, our starting salary is, for the new teachers, is 35,750?
Correct, that's, that's correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
And that's just base pay?
Base.
That doesn't include 301?
And that's entry levels, just a bachelor's.
Right. Which puts that total compensation package at over 57,000, for a brand-new teacher with no experience.
For what, well, we have to budget for the district, for their math, it's much in over 50,000.
57,000. Sorry.
Do you have the sense on that one, too? You're right.
No sense.
So, any other questions?
Anybody? Any more questions?
I have one question, oh, I actually have two questions, but they really don't, they have to do with this, but you mentioned the stipends, not everybody gets them, and I don't remember if I asked this question, of course, I forget if I did, is there an opportunity for everybody to participate? Because I know we see the same, like, people that leave clubs, or year after year after year, so do you have to wait, like, till somebody retires out before certain opportunities are available? Or is there an opportunity for every teacher that wants to participate in a stipend, club, or whatever?
I think we're getting better at that.
Okay.
So there is not an opportunity for every teacher to participate in something, and there are certain areas, particularly at the high school level, where there are not that many people who want to do certain jobs, and so it's a little bit difficult to find those folks. In other areas, there are, you know, more people who want to do it than there are opportunities available, that's particularly true at the elementary level. One of the things that we've been talking with our principals about, and again, is supplies at the high school more so, is actually reopening a lot of department chair positions every two to three years, to provide opportunities to rotate through those positions, and to actually have some additional leadership opportunities. So I do know that this past June, May and June, at the end of the year, Mr. Beveridge reopened every one of his department chair positions. I believe about half of them are changed over this year, as a result of that. And again, that provides opportunities for additional leadership experience for others.
So are you saying that that might be an opportunity in the future?
Yes.
For the secondary?
Again, secondary, yes, and it's a little bit more difficult, I think at the elementary level, they do grade level team leaders, and again, those are often determined basically on the experience, those are not paid, is that what you're saying?
They're not paid.
So there are other secondary positions with these, you know, council, and they have the KC club, this is secondary positions, but they're not on lock, they're on.
And then, my other question was, as you're going through this, you know, you've been so good at anticipating things that we're not even thinking about, and I'm very appreciative of that, Ms. Murray. In your, like, ASBO, I know you want to ASBO, right? Do you guys talk about how to fix the funding formula? Do you, like, have discussions on that? And who is it that's advising the legislature on, you know, is someone close to me who has said all the shenanigans that they put us through? So, I just wonder if you guys have those conversations, and if anybody's working on it, and if you're ever tapped for ideas in terms of how to fund our schools?
The ASBO meetings that we attend, you and I attend, are usually via webinar, they happen basically every other month, and there's topics for each of the meetings that we have. I can say that I received an email just the other day, actually, about that very topic from ASBO. There are those who belong to ASBO, who are down at the legislature, they are advocating for change on that very topic. The email that I just received referred to the Dukes of Hazzard, and they were listing off all of the things that were occurring and had occurred at the time there were even changes made, even small changes made to how the state funds education, and it was quite some time ago. But they are advocating on changing that, especially, a big topic of conversation now is regarding special education, because of just the cost associated with all of the needs that a lot of our students are having. It's very expensive to be able to educate, provide those required services for those students, and yet the funding formula hasn't changed in decades. So that is, that is a topic of conversation. I know that they work closely with attorneys, and again, they're advocates at the state level to bring that conversation up, and I know what happens at the legislative session. I just don't, I don't have the answers to how far along they are in that conversation.
I just wondered if they were tapping people in the schools, you know, for ideas on how to provide funding?
I don't have that, I'm sure they are, I'm sure that they have, they have their representatives down in Phoenix, and they're, they're so close-knit down there, they're pretty close, so they need to make it.
Well, that's, that's kind of the problem, I'm just wondering how we get them to look at people who haven't improved their financial health in their district, or, you know, districts that are doing things different. You know, they're all down there lobbying to keep their jobs, is what it seems like they're doing to me on lots of different levels. Meanwhile, funding formula's been broke since the day they opened it over 30 years ago, they knew it was broke then, so.
Yeah, a lot of emphasis is on the weighted count, and the weights associated with students, and there's some ideas that that's part of the broken system, is the fact that it's not an accurate reflection as to what's really needed to be able to help our students who need those resources. And a lot of those resources, as Ms. Walter has said before, and will continue to say, they're not inexpensive to provide those resources to those kids.
I would share, from the Arizona Laurel Schools Association, there is a group of superintendents that actually, we have Laurel Schools. My personal experience over the last few years is they're almost always trying to mitigate the damage that's going to be caused by several proposals. Current, your funding was a really good example, but the Laurel School Coalition wasn't gone enough to prevent that from going through, and so it's almost, everything that I've seen has been reactive, so here's this idea, how is it going to impact you, as opposed to being able to proactively, and provide ideas for different funding.
Well, I think part of the problem is not really taken into account annually, the legislative changes, beyond technical changes, but the legislative changes and the state board changes, they're just, you can barely keep up actually reading them, as they come through, you know, blood loan, actually implementing the changing at the beginning of schools, and I think that takes up a lot of our money. Anyways.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
I have a motion in the second floor, item 3.1. Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Gaston?
Yes.
Lisa Ruul?
Yes.
Our Chairman, Eliar?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
And item 3.2.
Madam President, members of the Board, it is recommended the governing board call for a public hearing on July 8, 2018. The governing board is asked to approve a call for a public hearing to be held on July 8 at 6:00 PM, to present for adoption the 2019-2020 proposed budget that was just presented to you for consideration of the residents of the district.
I move that please, as a governing board, hold a public hearing on July 8, 2019.
Is there a second?
John Gaston?
Yes.
Our Chairman, Eliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ruul?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And then, we have any announcements? No, no one answered. Then is there a motion, which are?
So moved.
Second.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Gaston?
Yes.
Lisa Ruul?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
And then, we have any announcements? No, no one answered. Then is there a motion, which are?